I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which is in one nation, on one earth, and with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us tonight. First, let's start with taking care of emergency business. Hopefully, we never have to do so, but if you must evacuate this room because of an emergency, use either the front or back door leading directly into the parking lot. If those doors are blocked, proceed through the two front doors, which leads through the commons to the first exterior door. And I'd like to thank Mr. Denapoli and staff on the excellent condition of the school, and thank you so much to the PTA for the wonderful refreshments that they provided for us during executive session. Okay, the Board of Education accepts the minutes of the Board of Education meetings held on February 9th, 2022, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed? Seconded by Mrs. Duraska. All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved. The Board of Education acknowledges receipt of the Treasurer's Report for January 2022 as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mrs. Duraska. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I will now turn it over to the Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Kami.
Thank you, Mrs. Kohl. Just a few things before we go on to our presentation for tonight. The first is, we are opening up pre-K registration again for next year. We, I'm sure you know, have 96 slots available. That is through the grant provided by New York State. So it will continue to be a Just Kids program. Students need to be four years old by December 1st. The registration opens April 1st through April 25th. All entries to the lottery are due no later than Monday, April 25th, at 12 noon. Those who are selected will be notified that same day, once the lottery is complete. Proof of residency must be provided in order to register or to be part of the lottery. So that is one piece of information. Second, we are offering another parent academy. That's going to be Tuesday, March 29th. It'll be via Zoom, so there's no excuses. It starts at 7:00 PM, and the topic is social media and teens, what parents should know, and guidance on device-free family time. One of the things that I want to stress is although it is about social media and teens, if you have a young person at home, an elementary or middle-school-aged person, they will one day be teens, and so I highly recommend that you participate in that. There is a flyer that will be a back path to all of our parents. Third is a product that we've been telling everybody about called Paper. I can't possibly understand why the company named themselves Paper, because it has nothing to do with paper, but it is an online 24/7 tutoring opportunity for kids in our secondary schools. The stories that we've been hearing, students in physics who participated for two-hour sessions with tutors, normally that tutoring would probably cost you $150 an hour. It's completely free to all district residents. We are purchasing that through federal money that we receive for what they call learning loss. So please take advantage of that opportunity. We have budget roadshows that are scheduled. We did our budget presentations at the last February board meetings. There is going to be budget roadshows through the PTAs, through the Chamber, through the civic associations. So please make sure that you stay tuned for that, because there's important information in there for all of our residents. And finally, just some student accolades that I want to share with you. So Baldwin High School Law Academy students took home first prize in the Northwell Health's 10th Annual Medical Marvels Competition. It's the second year in a row that our kids placed first. The boys' and girls' basketball teams won the Nassau County Championships. It was the boys' second consecutive Nassau County Championship, and the girls' eighth consecutive Nassau County Championship, and they're 11th in the last 12 years. This weekend is the Long Island Championship, so if you are able to attend, please purchase tickets. The link is online. The girls' indoor track 4x200 relay team won all state honors and finished second in the state. We are very proud of them. We also had a state qualifier, Stephen Elcock from Baldwin High School in the 300 meters for Baldwin Boys Indoor Track. Quasi Bonsoo was recently named a Nassau County Champion for Wrestling, which we have not had since 2008. Newsday featured him as an Athlete of the Week. And the last two things to share, we were on News 12 last night for the boys' and girls' basketball team wins and with the Medical Marvels win. All of that information is on our website. I think we do a pretty good job at making sure that the community knows all of the achievements of our students, so if you are interested, please check out the website for more information on that. Tonight, we have a presentation by Dr. Gallo. We've been doing a series of presentations this year to really inform the board and the community of some of the processes that we use in our regular practices. And so tonight, Dr. Gallo is going to be sharing how we go about hiring in the Baldwin School District. So, Dr. Gallo, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Dr. Kami, just a quick question on your report. Paper, is paper available during the summer, or will it end in June?
No, it's not going to end.
It'll continue throughout the summer?
Yes. So if you are that parent, that's going to make your child tune in over the summer.
I didn't say I was that parent, I just wanted to say.
Good evening. I'd like to start off by thanking the Board of Education for having me here tonight to provide an overview to all of you of the hiring processes and practices here in Baldwin School District. Currently, our administrators are working collaboratively to determine our needs for next year. We are currently looking at the projected elementary enrollment, and we are looking at the secondary course requests made by students to determine how many sections we need of each subject area or grade at each school. I think it's noteworthy to mention the importance of the recruiting and hiring process and responsibilities of recommending candidates to the Board of Education. Most do not realize until it's said out loud, when we're making recommendations to the Board of Education to hire a candidate, we are in most cases looking at a 30-year relationship with a teacher. Yes, 30 years. I think it goes without saying that this is a process that is taken very seriously. Decisions made today will have an impact on our students and programs for future decades. This slide here presented reminds us all that Baldwin is an equal opportunity employer. We pride ourselves on welcoming and celebrating diversity, as well as not discriminating against any potential employees. The presentation tonight is going to talk to you about the recruiting process and also touch on aspects of retention and development of our staff. The basis of our recruitment process is to find smart, forward-thinking candidates who are certified in the correct certification areas and willing to learn and grow throughout their entire career. We're going to talk a little about retention. I would be remiss in not mentioning that there's a job shortage that we all know about across our entire country, and we are certainly seeing a shortage of all of our teachers in just about all of the subject areas. So we must focus also on retention throughout the hiring process and how we're going to keep our employees happy and wanting to have a long and prosperous career here. People, I'm sorry, excuse me. It's important that our teachers, once hired, feel valued, appreciated, nurtured, and receive compensation, both in recognition and fair financial compensation. We would like them to have a long and satisfying career. For the most part, there's two types of staff that we're hiring. We're looking at certificated staff, such as our administrators, our supervisors, teachers, teaching assistants, and school psychologists. We also have employees who fall into a non-certificated area, such as our secretaries, facility workers, special education teacher aides, monitors, and food service, to name a few. So when recruiting certified staff, we often have a lead administrator who is going to oversee the process and coordinate the recommendations. For high-level administrators like principals, directors, and assistant superintendents, these positions are typically headed up by the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, which would be me. Positions that would fall to the building levels, such as deans and assistant principals, teachers, and teaching assistants, the person heading up those positions typically would be at the building level and would be the principal and/or the department supervisor. Once we decide there is a need for a position to be filled, we create and generate a posting. The posting indicates the nature of the position, the certification requirements for the position, the hours, location, and how a candidate would apply. Our postings are disseminated in a variety of places, which I will get to. The team will go through the steps outlined here on the slide about identifying the needs and qualifications, building a pool of candidates, a rigorous vetting procedure, which we'll go through, recommendations are prepared, and finally, we seek board approval. So where do we find these qualified candidates? So we build capacity from within. We are involved in teacher preparation programs where we have student observers and student teachers who work in the schools. Many of our student teachers are offered opportunities to work in Baldwin in various capacities, including permanent subs, teacher aides, leave replacements, and of course, are encouraged to apply for any probationary positions. We also now have an education academy at the high school. Baldwin High School students can participate in this education academy where they are educated and gain experience in the field of teaching. With a teacher shortage, which also includes a shortage of diverse candidates, one of the goals of having a homegrown program is that our students go through our program and hopefully continue to pursue the field of education in college, and then we are hopeful they will come back to the Baldwin community where they will engage in internships and student teaching experiences. What would be better than to hire our own graduates in the future to teach future generations of Baldwin students? The current generation is no longer looking at newspaper ads for work, so placing expensive ads no longer works for us. Candidates are going to social media. All of our postings are shared on various social media sites and platforms like LinkedIn, Facebook, Indeed, and platforms such as Recruit Front and OLS. Another way we seek talent is through participation in recruitment fairs. This year, I'll be participating in the Columbia Teachers College Recruitment Fair, as well as the Nassau County Bocey Diversity Fair. Both of these organizations gather up candidates, and based on the needs that we have, will set up interviews for us to participate in. The Columbia Teachers College will be a virtual recruitment fair in two weeks, and the Bocey Diversity Fair will be an in-person fair this year, and a couple of the supervisors from the high school and middle school will be joining me. We also have college partnerships. So for example, Malloy College, Malloy has invited us over the years to participate in mock interviews with their education majors who will be graduating. Two years ago, I participated in the mock interviews via Zoom, and last year, thankfully, we're back to in-person mock interviews. Again, this is an opportunity to reach candidates who often result in being hired before the end of the school year as substitute teachers, who are also encouraged to apply for our openings. I mentioned Recruit Front earlier, and I'd like to show you what Recruit Front looks like. Recruit Front is the hiring platform that all of our postings are posted to, where anyone out there can, we can go to our Recruit Front and click on any link and come to any job posting that's available. So even though our postings are sent out to colleges, and our postings are sent out to all the platforms on social media, they will all bring back a potential candidate to Recruit Front, where they actually will do an application and apply online. We've also built, can you go back to the slide? So another thing that I've been building is a list of contacts with colleges and universities who have a diverse populations of students and a high enrollment of diverse students. All of our postings are being sent to these contacts to be shared to increase the diversity in candidates who are applying for our positions. And so as you can see, there's some local colleges here on Long Island, like Adelphi and Malloy. We have the CUNY schools. We also have contacts with the historical Black colleges and universities through LinkedIn groups, so all of our postings are sent to these groups, so we can again increase our pool of candidates. So the vetting process. So once we determine that we have a need to fill a position, the vetting process does begin. The administrator who is leading the group and that hiring team will review applications that are submitted to Recruit Front. They will ensure that the certification credentials are in order for the position that we require that we are hiring for. The administrators will screen candidates. We were doing screenings virtually the last two years. We're doing virtual and in-person screenings. They will narrow down the pool to a handful of candidates that meet the criteria established on the posting. Stakeholder interviews are then set up. These stakeholder interviews typically consist of administrators, parents, teachers at the secondary level. We do like to include our students. Depending on the position that we're filling, we often will include support staff, sometimes it's facilities, secretarial staff, teacher aides. If it's a principal, we want all stakeholders to have a say and have their voice heard in the process. Throughout the process, there are writing and inbox tasks. We do want to make sure that all of our candidates have good communication skills in written and oral form. Demonstration lessons also do occur. Our teachers do have to put together a demonstration lesson that they deliver actually in front of students. Those are observed by our administrators. In some cases, we do give academic tests, so if you're coming in for a math position, we do give you a math test to make sure that you are able to handle the high-level math. We often will ask you to explain how the high-level math works, so that we can not only go through the process of math problems, but also understand the math behind the math. All of our candidates or employees who work in the district must be cleared by New York State Teach for fingerprint clearance and background check. Recall, reference checks are done on every candidate that is hired. We look at their past employers for reference checks and their current supervisors. Once the teams make a recommendation for finalists, it's typically two or three candidates for each position. Those recommendations are sent in, and then the superintendent's cabinet does interview all candidates that are coming through, and then if we make a selection, we then send our recommendations to the Board of Education for an approval. So it's quite an extensive process that is time-consuming, and we actually have started the process for the positions that we are filling for this coming school year.
Dr. Gallo, can you just, on the second and last step, can you explain who's in that interview, the superintendent's interview?
Well, if we're hiring for almost all staff, it's going to be typically Dr. Kami, Superintendent, myself, and usually Mr. Maniella from Curriculum and Instruction. So we will have interview all of those candidates at length to make sure that they are fit, that they know the content, and that, again, looking for smart candidates, who we believe we are open-minded to being able to accept feedback, accept professional development, and want to grow in their career, for their entire career. So although the conversation we're having tonight really deals with most of our certified staff, I did want to at least put in a slide about our non-certificated staff. So non-certificated staff generally fall into two areas, competitive and non-competitive in labor. So our competitive staff is typically our clerical positions and our custodial staff. So if we're looking to fill one of those vacancies, the process is that we'd have to contact Nassau County Silver Service, and we need to request from them the competitive list that is associated with the title we're looking to fill. We would then receive a list that's in great order. We send out canvas letters to those people listed on the Nassau County list, and then the people who are indicating that they're interested in our position. We do hold interviews. We are only able to recommend to the position the people who said yes and score the best on the test. Okay, so it's a little bit different than non-competitive in labor. If we're looking to fill in a groundskeeper position, or a cleaner, or even a nurse position, there is not a competitive list. There is a criteria that Silver Service sets out. So for example, if we're looking to find a maintainer, a maintainer has to have at least one full year of experience in the area of maintenance to be eligible to apply for the position. A teacher aide has to have at least a high school diploma. A cleaner has to have at least an eighth-grade education or higher. So each position, although there's no test, has a criteria that Silver Service has established, and we have to be able to demonstrate the candidate meets that qualification to recommend them. So once we have successfully recommended candidates to the Board of Education, and the Board of Education approves the hiring, it's important that we retain our new hires. High-quality orientation programs and mentoring are provided to our new staff, our new teaching staff. Our administrative team at the schools have ongoing meetings with new staff and frequent check-ins. New staff are also mentored and take part in its new staff cohort. This is a unique program to Baldwin. It is a four-year cohort program for all new staff members that are hired. The cohort of new staff will work together over the first four years with specific agendas set out for each year. During these trainings, they will learn the latest state-of-the-art techniques and practices to ensure they have the tools to be the best teachers they can be for our students. So one of the questions that we ask is, why would you like to work in Baldwin? So at an upcoming job fair that I'll be participating in, we were asked to submit a very brief video of why people would want to work in Baldwin. So this will be making its debut tonight, and I am very pleased to be able to share this with you tonight for the first time in public.
The Baldwin community is a wonderful, wonderful place to live and to work. We are a diverse community located on the south shore of Long Island, with students and families that represent the mosaic of the world that we live in.
Baldwin is a wonderful sort of microcosm of our country.
Like walking through the hallways, you get to see a lot of people of different nationalities, cultures, religions as well, and you kind of get to get different experiences and learn more.
We have great rapport with the community, the parents, the partnerships that we have with the surrounding schools and hospitals.
The people I work with are rock stars.
We really pride ourselves in the innovative nature in which we see educating for our young people and learning.
The things that I have learned here and seen here, I always see here first.
Our students have hands-on learning opportunities that help them truly deepen their understanding and knowledge.
At the elementary level, our science curriculum and program was written by a scientist. At the middle school, we have something called Better World Day, which is an opportunity for our young people to really think about topics and ideas that would create a better world. And at the high school, an area that I would focus on is really our academy program. I think that it is a program that really defines us.
We have a very robust professional development environment here in Baldwin.
The most recent professional development that I attend is Harvard.
One of the unique things that I really appreciate about Baldwin is the new teacher program that's provided to all staff. And it's a four-year program, and you're working with administrators, you're working with your building leaders, you're working with teachers and developing your professional skills.
In the educator residency program, we've had an opportunity to look at sort of the future of education.
We don't emphasize on test score so much. We emphasize more on current student for the real world.
We are learning about how to engage students in more real-world activities through either inside the classroom or outside of the classroom. We're also taking internships ourselves.
I was able to get an opportunity to be part of a redesign for a classroom, would set up an entire room that fit what students would need to really succeed in that class.
If you are a lifelong learner, that would suggest that Baldwin is the place for you, because if you look at our rates, we are successful, you know, we're successful at what we're doing right now.
This is not a place where you are just going to come and lecture and teach your students. Our students have a voice here. It's a collaborative approach.
If you want to be in a place that is really thinking about the future of learning and the future of work, if you want to work in a place that really thinks about students and their future, if you have new and interesting ideas and you want a place to cultivate those new and interesting ideas, then Baldwin is definitely the place for you.
Baldwin feels like home.
Do you have any questions? Thank you very much, Dr. Gallo. Do we have any questions from the board? Mrs. Duraska?
Can you hear me comfortably? Okay. Thanks for the presentation. I thought that was excellent, although we hear you talk often, but it was good to kind of walk through the process. The first question I had is, in terms of finding candidates, you listed all the different sources of how you find them, what do you feel is the most successful way thus far in terms of getting candidates, what has worked?
Well, the interesting thing is when our candidates do apply on Recruit Front, there is a question on the application process asking them how they heard about the position. So I do look at that to see where we're getting, where the attention's coming from. So either they're doing it through Google searches, most of them, or they're getting the postings I'm sending to the colleges. So, and I find that the postings that I send to all the colleges have like a career center, but I think the ones that are getting to the teachers and the candidates are the ones that I've made those personal connections. So I may have, you know, Queens College, I send it to the career center, but I also made connection with five or six professors in the education department, and when I send it to them, that's how the postings are getting in the hands of the students.
Okay, thanks. And do you also know, like through referrals, through like other teachers, admins, has that helped as well, or you don't really see as much of the people coming in through, being referred through those that are already working here?
No, I think it's a combination of everything that we're doing, but I do think that the postings and getting them out on the social media, you know, between my personal professional account and the school districts, we have about 2,500 followers, and we also have, and most of those are, you know, all professionals and groups, all organizations, professional organizations. So I think between that site and getting it to the colleges is really where it's at at this point.
That means you're an influencer. You have like 20.
Maybe it's my next career.
The other question is, in terms of retention and development, can you talk a little bit about mentorship? So when someone joins and becomes a part of the Baldwin Community Team, are they all immediately given like a peer mentor, and for how long?
Right, so currently, when we hire a new teacher, they are all given an actual mentor for the first year. Depending on whether or not this is their first teaching experience and what level of their certification is, they may have someone assigned by the district, or they'll have someone assigned by the Teachers Association. Either way, the current practice is that they have a person that is assigned to them. Over the summer, as soon as they're assigned, I email the teacher and the mentor to tell they can get in touch with each other in July and August, so that they can start to bond, and they can start to help the new teacher out, because there's always so many questions when you're new, and you just need to feel comfortable. That retention piece is really important. We don't want anyone feeling that they're not engaged with us right from the get-go. As you know, there's a shortage, and we don't want people shopping around. As soon as we hire them, we want them to feel that they're part of our Baldwin family.
But just to add to that, I think that the real effective quote mentoring is our four-year new teacher program. So what you'll find in most school districts is there's a week in August that they'll do kind of an orientation to the district, you know, a lot of administrative stuff. This is where you find this. Here's the head of special ed, here's, and then they'll go into some background about curriculum and things like that. A lot of districts will continue that into a one-year. I don't know any district that does it for four. And so in that first year and second year, we're really orienting people to how we expect learning to happen inside a school district. So planning with understanding by design, learning teaching for understanding strategies, going into teachers' projects, year old protocols, things of that nature. Year three is all on the use of technology in classrooms, and year four is looking at student work and kind of putting it all together in a package. So for those four years, not only are they learning what the expectations are in the district, because I think it's unfair, right? You hire someone, they need to know what you're expecting from them, but they also bond as a group. And so what we find is that the folks that are in that four-year academy together really become very good friends. And I think that is a form of mentoring that doesn't happen artificially, it's just really homegrown.
So it's kind of like a cohort throughout the Baldwin. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mrs. O'Hagan?
Yes, on civil service, I know for years, Jesus, we've talked about the lists. What happens when there's no one on the list? You're required to hire someone that's on a civil service list, but there's no one on there or no one appropriate. How do we handle that?
Unfortunately, that does happen quite frequently lately. So, the list is exhausted, and what we have to do is then ask for a provisional placement. So, we then are getting, we are getting written permission from civil service that we can put basically anyone who meets the criteria that they give us in the position. The caveat is, is that when they finally give a new test, that person has to take the test and then score high enough that when we canvas, we can reach them. So, if they score a 90, most likely we'll reach them. If they score a 70, most likely on a new test, we won't reach them, and we'd have to replace them with someone who scores higher.
Okay, okay. On, under the topic of retention, you refer to something called understanding by design. I assume it's a program. Could you explain a little bit about it?
Sure, it's really a system of, you know, of the teachers' planning, and usually you start with a simple question from the end, like what you want students to know, and then you plan your lesson backwards. So, at the end, you know where you're going to end up with the lesson and the unit is going to be speaking to.
You know, the other thing I was, I'm curious about, evaluation, is once you've hired someone, I'm sure there's a process in place for evaluating them, and is that, is it formalized in a set of procedures in your office for each different category of employee?
Right, well, under, we have to follow our approved APPR plan. So, in our APPR plan, all teachers are observed at minimum twice a year. There's an 80%, an evaluation that's worth 80% of their full score, and there's an observation that's worth at least 20%. And that's half of their score. The other half of their score comes from student performance. Okay, over the last two years, student performance kind of went out the window with regents, since we didn't have regents exams and we didn't have that measure. So, there wasn't a full APPR score in place last year. But we still go forward. At minimum, we are observing formally all of our staff at least twice. Walk-ins happen all of the time, so it sounds like not a lot, but our administrative team and our supervisors are in classrooms all day long. That's the bulk of what they should be doing during the day, and they're doing, constantly doing walkthroughs, giving teachers feedback, positive feedback, reflective feedback. They're, so that's ongoing.
So, you do meet with the staff regularly that are being observed. Whoever is doing the observation then has a meeting with that person to give them guidance and.
Some of the observations have a pre-conference, you sit down and review the lesson plan prior, administrator goes and reviews, and then there's a post-observation. Some of them are unannounced, where you go in without the teacher knowing where you're coming, observe, and then you give feedback. Again, it's up to the administrators, but we can certainly go in more than twice to do a formal observation. We can always increase that number. The minimum that we must do is at least two.
Thank you.
I just want to add one other thing. So, one of the practices in Baldwin is for all non-tenured teachers, Dr. Gallo organizes the administrators who are, who supervise that teacher, and we need about all the new teachers twice a year. So, if you are in your fourth year of being a teacher, there have been administrative teams who have kind of reviewed your progress eight times, in addition to all of the formal observations. So, if somebody is struggling, we put in interventions in place to help that teacher. If we think that a teacher is not going to make it in Baldwin, not because they're not a good person or not even necessarily, you know, but they may just not fit in here, that is reviewed at least twice a year, every single year during the non-tenure period.
Thank you. And the last thing I was going to ask is, I heard you say something about mentors, and is that for a new teacher, is it also for a new administrator? Do new hires, certificated new hires, get mentors, like one-on-one mentors?
I think for our administrators, we do pair them up with somebody from the administrative unit, but a lot of the mentoring for our new administrators and supervisors comes from Mr. Maniella. He meets with them on a very regular basis, one-on-one and in small groups, and he is providing, I think, the bulk of the mentoring for the direction of our programs.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Thank you. So, again, thank you very much, Dr. Gallo. Wonderful presentation. I'd like to just remind everybody, if you have a question or a comment for tonight's public comment session, please be sure to fill out a card and give it to Ms. Pratt. Thank you. We will now move on to liaison reports. Who would like to start?
I can start. Since the last meeting, there was a webinar which I attended, and I thought it was, it was extremely well done, on curriculum and the school board's role in curriculum, and I have a copy of the information, if anyone else on the board should be interested in reading it. I thought it was very worthwhile. I also attended the Legislative Muley honored Darius Burton for his achievements as basketball coach, and I attended that. This morning, I had a LIEC meeting, and we are completing something we do, have done every year for the past number of years. It's a budget impact survey. We survey the school districts on Long Island to determine year to year what the effects have been of changes in state aid. So, that will be, the survey will be going out actually the beginning of May. And that's, that's it.
Thank you. Mrs. Reed?
I will say that I'm not as, what's the word I'm looking for? I'm just a little more fun. So, I was at the basketball game over the weekend, and I have to tell you, it was great to see the parents and the families back out in a normal environment, I guess, as normal as it can be post-pandemic. And just congratulations to our teams and our girls' track, and all the things that are happening. I mean, it's just kind of nice that we are starting to get back to some pre-pandemic existence. So, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Like Mrs. Reed and Mrs. O'Hagan, I was happy to go to one of the basketball games this weekend, and I should publicly thank Mrs. Reed for being such an incredible cheerleader for the basketball teams. The Baldwin fans were kind of sitting there, and then Mrs. Reed showed up a few minutes late and started waving her arms and leading the cheers, and it was, it was really great. Thank you, Mrs. Reed. Additionally, with Mary Jo, I attended the Chamber of Commerce lunch, and I see some of my chamber friends are here, and that's always a good opportunity to connect with some folks who might not be able to show up to these meetings, and, you know, they ask some questions about the district, and it's, it's good to hear their opinion of what's going on in town and what's going on in the district, and that's my report.
Thank you. Mrs. Dereska?
So, I'll take it a little way back. Founder's Day took place for different schools, so I attended Lennox PTA, Middle School PTA, High School PTA Founder's Day. They're all done via Zoom, but creative and lots of prizes and wheels of fortune, so that was great to at least see that this pandemic doesn't take up the joy, we still could be creative and have a good time. I also, as Mrs. O'Hagan mentioned, attended the recognition by Miss Legislative Muley for Mr. Burton, our boys' basketball coach, which was also during the Black History Month, so that was also great. The Boys and Girls Basketball Playoffs, I attended prior to them having their win, which is also great, just to see the hype and getting back to some level of normalcy. And while many of you were in Hofstra, I was in Staten Island with a few of my track family out here. We went to state championships for our girls' track team, first time in Baldwin history that they had a four-by-two relay and actually came in second place, so state silver title. We have an eighth grader as well on our team, so that was great to be a part of that. So, kudos to all the recognition happening and looking forward to sports night. It's like a lot of things happening right now, so great to see. Thanks.
I also attended the basketball games, and I would like to congratulate all of our student athletes, as well as our students receiving recognition and accolades for the academics in the academies and the competitions. Really something to be proud of. Our young people are just incredible. And in lieu of a liaison report, I would actually like to just do something a little different this evening. I would like to invite my fellow board members to just engage in a very brief conversation that I think should be had, and it's good for the public to listen to as well. And that is about Innovation 2020. As all of you know, we had put this out to the community, and unfortunately, it was not voted, it was not approved. But I think that every day, the need increases for the projects that were in this proposal. You know, we have an amazing buildings and ground staff, and they work diligently, day in and day out, especially through the last two years. But some of our buildings are over 100 years old. I mean, think about your homes. We all live in a community where the homes tend to be, or the majority of them, tend to be older, and, you know, you maintain them and you do what you need to do, but you're, you're always trying to keep up with it. And we are able to keep up with maintaining, but the big projects, you know, that's, that's something that just cannot be done out of a regular budget. And, you know, again, I think that we're really seeing the need for these projects. And if you, well, I know some of you have attended the budget presentations that we've held so far, and there are some very large projects being proposed out of capital reserve, such as turf field at the high school. That was a big item in, in the bond proposal. And bathrooms throughout the district, and there's a few more of those projects. But being as we would now be able to do those aside from a bond, if we were to, at some point, re-put a bond out to the community, those items would not be in it. So, you know, the number might be something more that the community could get behind. I would hope so. And I invite my board members to chime in and maybe share your feelings as well. Ms. Coles?
So, as we saw in the video that was presented by Dr. Gallo, I mean, we're doing phenomenal things in this district, and I believe that our administrative staff is doing all they can to be creative with the resources that are available to them, not only with through capital reserves, but any funding, federal funding opportunities that we have, any grants, grants that we qualify for, however big or small those are. I just think it's also very important for us to have a forward-thinking mindset with respect to education, which our team has diligently implemented. And we do that well, I think, within the curriculum, but I also feel that it's important that we do whatever we can to have our buildings be reflective of what our students are going to see upon leaving, graduating from the high school. I know it's expensive. I know it's very expensive that we live in, in the times that we're living in. People pay a pretty penny with taxes and whatnot. But part of our job as, as community members is to invest in our school district. And so, again, I'm not saying we give away the candy store, but somehow we have to figure out what we can do that can be presented to the community in a way that it's acceptable for, you know, they're willing to get behind it, but we do the best in terms of presenting or working for our children.
Yes, thank you. Mrs. O'Hagan?
Yeah, I completely agree with Mrs. Reed. You know, the last couple of years, there's been very little opportunity, energy, whatever, to talk about anything except the pandemic, and all of the efforts that we've made to bob and weave to kind of accommodate that. And there was no time to have a follow-up conversation after the bond was not approved. So, I think as things are beginning to open up and there's an opportunity for in-person conversation, I'm really glad that Mrs. Coles brought this up, because I think now we really need to begin reaching out, taking the temperature of the community, and getting a feel for what people are, are interested in, are willing to support. As Mrs. Coles pointed out, we pulled a couple of things from the bond and have included them as part of our budget this year, but there were items that were in that bond that simply cannot be covered in a regular budget and cannot be easily pulled apart. In other words, I'm thinking specifically of building air conditioning, where we can't very well say, oh, Lennox is going to get it, but not, not Brookside. So, we really, now is a great time to begin to start reaching out, getting opportunities for the community to give us their thoughts about where we're at with that, because Mrs. Reed is absolutely right. We would not have put it before the community if this board didn't think that the things in it were necessary to support the program.
Yes, thank you. Mrs. Dereska?
So much has already been said. I think that it's also important to realize that this community, while it's a reflection of our schools, we have businesses here as well, and we want more businesses to come. The way that we look on the outside does not represent as well, and I think we need an uplift. I am despised by the way that our school looks on the outside and walking towards brands. It's not, that is the central hub, say it again?
The high school.
The high school, excuse me, yes, the high school. No, not Plaza, the high school. So, it's a reflection of who we are and how we look, and since it's a central hub, it's not the way that we should be looking right now in 2022. You go to other school districts, and this just shoots us in the face and says, no, it does not represent the curriculum and the academies, and we should be building for it later on. We're not building for today, we're building for five years from now, 10 years from now. We're innovative, and that's how we should proceed.
Yeah, just to echo a bit what Mrs. Dereska is saying, I know, every time I drive down Lakeview Avenue to go to my uncle's nursing home, I pass Malvern and their beautiful new construction that they have, and I'm a little jealous. Definitely, you know, there's something to be said for, as you say, you know, the more modern-looking facility. We've got fantastic programs inside our high school. It would be nice if, if, you know, the physical appearance kind of went along with that, which is not to say that we just need to do aesthetic things. You know, we needed an approved library media center. The wizards in the district office have figured out how to do that without the Bond Act, and can I, do people know that soon we'll have a new media center in the high school? And that's, they don't know that? Okay. Okay, this place that doesn't exist, they're beautiful, according to Mrs. Coles. So, we're able to do some, some little projects, but there's some big things we need done. You know, I've had teacher friends say, you know, sometimes they know people think twice about, you know, I kind of like that school district, but that school district has air conditioning everywhere, and September and June are hellish in, you know, in old school buildings with, with no air conditioning. And something like that, as Mrs. O'Hagan was saying, is, is a big nut, you know, and that's something that sometimes we have to do a bond for to jump us into the next level. I'm happy to say, you know, going to the Chamber of Commerce meeting, sometimes we get to talk to folks and, you know, business owners who are big taxpayers, and it's been good to get their opinions on some of it too. And, you know, one guy I really respect was saying, and he had shown up for our bond presentations, you know, and asked good questions, and he said, I wasn't against the bond. He said, it just seemed to me that there were a couple of things. it just seemed to me that there were a couple of things there that weren't as necessary as three-quarters of it. And, you know, if you all showed up with another bond that just maybe had a more comfortable price tag, I could support that. You know, he's saying he, he wants to be, you know, proud of the schools in the town where his business is. So that's just a little feedback that way.
Well, great food for thought. Thank you very much, everybody. And I look forward to future conversations, not only amongst the board, but with our community as well. You know, we love to hear from you and we would definitely like, like your thoughts on this subject. So thank you. Thank you, everybody. Okay, we are now at the question and comment period. The public participation component of Baldwin Board meetings is limited to residents, business owners, or employees of the Baldwin School District, and is limited to 30 minutes and a maximum of three minutes per person. We cannot comment on issues about personnel or individual students. In an effort to ensure a respectful environment, we ask that you write your question or comment on the form located at the back of this room, which will be collected. We will call you up to the microphone to ask your question. Sorry, I'm reading this off my phone. If we do not have an answer to your question or need to contact you with further details, the information you provide on the form will be essential. As always, we thank you for your respectful comments and questions. Okay, so let's get started. Stefan and Naradin? Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, the pencil didn't, it's very light. It was hard to see. I apologize. But feel free. Thank you so much.
sitting in the office, I mean, sitting in the auditorium, yeah, audience. We are parents of a ninth grader who has been a member of the Baldwin High School Girls Track Team since the seventh grade. Our daughter has had a great academic experience in Baldwin, starting at Steel School to now taking all honors and AP classes at Baldwin High School. While strong in academics, the district needs to make great strides in equality in sports. We are greatly disappointed, disappointed with the treatment of the girls' track team. This past Saturday, the girls' track team made history. The four-by-two relay team won silver at the New York State Indoor Championship and silver for the New York State Federation. According to the track and field state records, it has been at least over 15 years since the Baldwin High School Girls Track Team has medaled at the state championships. What makes this achievement, achievement even more special is that the relay team is made up of freshmen. And when I say freshmen, I mean one eighth grader and three ninth graders. The relay team that came in first is made up of three juniors and a sophomore. There is no other all-freshman four-by-two relay team competing, let alone meddling at the high school level in New York State. And what was Baldwin High School's reaction to this great achievement? There was an initial post on IG and nothing else. Even the coach was not given accolades for their success. In fact, after the girls' state track meet, they went to Hofstra to support the boys' basketball team. They couldn't attend the girls' basketball game because they were still competing at their own track meet. After the game, the girls saw their athletic director. Our daughter told us that he looked at them, looked at their medals, and walked away without saying a word. Is that how you treat the student athletes who you know just medaled at their first high school state championships meet? Is that how you should treat student athletes in general? On Monday morning announcements, the girls' and boys' basketball teams winning the Nassau County Championships were announced, and when the Long Island Championships were taking place, nothing was said about the girls' track team. Nothing. One of the girls' teachers even asked her why their achievement wasn't mentioned during the announcements. It wasn't the first time nothing was mentioned regarding their achievements, but we wonder if it will be the last time. This snub is just the latest snub, snub that we've had to deal with from the Baldwin High School community. How does this behavior show equity within the school district? We always felt that the girls' track team was of very low interest to the athletic director. I must note, although no one from administration has attended a track meet, even the meets at Baldwin High School, it is known that members of the administration has attended other teams' games. We're not saying that the administration must love track, but what we are saying is that the track team should be treated equally. Most recently, we noticed there was still a lack of equality in regard to acknowledgement of accomplishments. The boys' track team and the other sports were acknowledged on social media, district emails, and school emails. Isn't the girls' track team a part of the Baldwin District community? Even the principal's noe email that's sent out to everyone never mentioned the girls' track team until one of the parents emailed the principal. Leading up to the basketball Nassau County Championships, there were district emails sent out informing the community and asking them to come out and support the teams. There was no communication sent out asking the community to come out and support the track teams during their state championship.
Time.
I just have, I just have a little bit more, another minute. The reason why the Baldwin community at large even knows there's a high school track team doing things is due to the parents blasting their achievements on social media, which goes to the continued lack of support, support and equity the girls feel. The girls attend the school and feel less than others. All children at some level want to feel their hard work and achievements are at least acknowledged. Children thrive in a supportive, positive environment. They don't feel like they're on equal footing with the boys' team or with the other Baldwin High School team. In this day and age, when mental health is at the forefront for our children, this is a dangerous time for our daughters to feel this way. We take nothing away from the basketball teams from winning the Nassau County Championships because that is a great accomplishment. But the girls' track team has competed and won at the conference, county, and now state level, where they won silver. News 12 interviewed the basketball teams regarding their achievement. Was News 12 even notified of the girls' track team historic achievement? Can you tell us who decides who gets outside media coverage? And what is Baldwin High School's ideology in regard to equality in sports and arts? From our experience, it seems not all sports, sports are treated equally in this district.
Thank you very much for your comments. Doily noted, please know. And we have your information so somebody can get back in touch with you. And thank you very much for, for coming and for your comments. And congratulations.
Thank you. I wanted to speak, I know we're together, but it's actually been separate. I'm gonna go and take a, just a minute. All right, so I just wanted to kind of, obviously you heard what we mentioned through my wife in regards to the inclusion of the track team. I just had a question. We're, we're local business owners as well. We moved there to Baldwin about nine years ago, right? So with that, we've been able to really be a part of the community and help and see how it has grown. Our business is consulting, another business consulting, also Cohen is a swirled list, which is right next to Baldwin High School. And also, I just wanted to know, how are you guys connecting with businesses in the community to be part of Baldwin's High School's improvement, development? And that's one question I want to pose. I know sometimes we have some students that come work with us, whether through a work program. So I just wanted to know, how can that be improved and how can we be connected with Baldwin High School? That's my question.
Sorry. So that's a really good question. One of the things that we've made an effort to do at the high school, and it really started this year in earnest, is to reach out to local businesses to expand on our internship and externship program for our high school students. So we have your contact information. You may be sorry that you asked the question and gave us your contact information.
Not at all, not at all.
But I, you will hear from Ms. Franza from the high school to pursue that, that avenue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Again, thank you very much. Okay, Melissa Watts?
They won't hear you on call.
Yeah, sorry. And I just would like to remind everybody, I'm sorry, but we do have to adhere to the three-minute time limit, just so everyone gets a turn. Thank you.
Good evening. Melissa Watts, first meeting I'm Marjorie, Queens, New York. The last gentleman and his wife spoke earlier, and my question is just like, the question would be, what does the district do for PR? How is it handled? What gets put out there and what doesn't? Even at the boys' game, you know, there was a step team there. There was a cheerleaders, the cheerleaders got accolades. There was nothing about, you know, there's no photos. I was sitting over by where the kids were sitting, so I only got the side view. It's nice to acknowledge them, no matter what they do. Who is, how is DASSA issues handled? So if you, a referral comes from a school, I know there's people in place, it's, I believe, Alnean Barrera at the high school. And how, so I know when you go on the state, it's like two years back, right? So you can look at how many DASSA reports have been filled out. How's that work? If a kid comes in saying something, do they even know who to go to or, like for bullying?
Ms. Watts, can you say the question on this side? The mic is not...
So for bullying, if a child's being bullied, who refers that to a DASSA issue?
Do you want to answer, or do you want to have her ask all of her questions and then you address them, or do you want to do one by one? Okay, well, Mrs. Watts, yeah, just go down your list and then...
We were at the meeting when the football field was put on. I would ask that you look at lighting. I checked around a couple of schools that do have it. Levittown made over $15,000 last year for, just in food, for the lacrosse teams that use it for tournaments. Just because they have the lights, they can go till 10, 11 o'clock at night, and it's all day long. So if we're spending the money, if there's money there to be had, and that's just in the food. We've talked a lot about the digital drama that goes on. Lots of Neopod, lots of stuff on computers that can be used with the kids. I've asked multiple kids, nothing in school about digital drama in any capacity, what's being done with that. It's really interesting that you brought up during the 20, the 2020 campaign. We haven't done any district survey about our school culture climate. I would suggest we do that before we go into this. Lots of schools have done it coming out of COVID. Students, parents, teachers, staff, administrators, board of ed, well answered. What's the pulse of the buildings, each building, each building? And the last question is just about, have, has our staff been taking PD and say, de-escalation since COVID?
So some of these, we would have to get back to you. The question about PR and specifically the question around News 12, News 12 contacted us that there are some connections between the coaches and the media, and they're, truthfully, they follow some of our athletic teams. So the question about that, we put everything out. I think you have to remember that there are 56 school districts in Nassau County and 124 school districts on Long Island.
I meant, I just, I just meant internally, like what's getting put out on the Twitter?
We send out press releases all the time. Things that are being put out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram are done through somebody that works for the district to do that. They do not put everything out all at the same times because they want to, to parse that out over time. So they may, for example, put something out, you know, on a Thursday, and then on a Friday, and then on a Monday. The athletic department does have a separate Twitter account, and so there will be postings to that separate and apart from, from the district account. The question about bullying and the DASSA reports, on orientation, all of our kids are informed about that. It is in the handbook, the student handbook, so, which everybody has access to. I don't, it's sometimes hard to hear. I didn't hear that there was a question about lights as much as there was a comment about it.
Just a comment, just a comment.
Okay. And the survey around school culture, we have not done a formal survey. And one of the things we've been really sensitive about this year is, we have done a lot of surveys over the last two years, and we sometimes will use class time to do that. We're sensitive to the amount of time that both our kids are online, because they're online a lot for school, and we're sensitive to the number of surveys that have been, that our kids have taken this year. So there is a, another survey that we generally do every, it's generally, I think, every five years. They delayed that survey last year, and they actually delayed it this year. And that is sort of sitting right now on the docket to, to go out to all of our kids. But we're trying to parse it out in such a way that we get a good response, because I think our kids are tired. And so that we're trying to be sensitive to that. The question about de-escalation training, I don't have an answer for you, so I can get back to you.
Thank you very much.
You're going to give me all these afterwards, right?
Okay. Okay, Mr. Mahler, you've got a couple of questions in your three minutes? And if, and we may not be able to answer everything at the meetings, and if not, somebody will certainly get back to you.
Good evening, school board. I just have two quick questions, and then I just have a third one that I would like, just a clarification. This came from someone that's not attending. Bullying, are they keeping records and what systematic strategies are they implementing to reduce any type of bullying? Kind of following up on what Ms. Watts said, whether it's, I don't know anything about DASSA, I don't know what that even means. Then there's the second question from someone not attending. Remote instruction, being that COVID built the infrastructure for remote instruction, how are they adapting and integrating it to their schooling, or are they just abandoning all that tech infrastructure? Obviously, you did a great job during the COVID times. What's going to happen now with all that investment? And are you trying to do it with others? But where I'm, my question is, and I know I'm three minutes... But where I'm, my question is, and I know I'm three minutes, so I probably burned a minute asking other people's questions. I have, you know, it was great, it's awesome, Dr. Gallagher gave this presentation about the hiring. And I guess the hiring only works is that we're following the policies, because here's the elementary assistant principal position, and it says bilingual Spanish speaking is a must. Yet from what I understand about the new hire at Steel Elementary School, that she needs to still go after the program that you have as Spanish and English interpreter, because she is not a fluent Spanish speaker. Yet there were candidates that were hired, excuse me, interviewed, that not only were of color, which is amazing, and we need to hire more individuals of color, that were not hired. But if this is the job posting, which we just had that great presentation, we hire it, and it says specifically must be bilingual, and she is not, yet we just hired someone, according to your posting, I don't know what that means. Secondly, we have courageous conversations last year. Seventy-two members of our Baldwin family participated, participated in deep and meaningful reflection about race in our society. Yet we had one of Baldwin's own. She raised her kids here. She applied for an assistant principal position at Plaza and was overlooked, and Baldwin lost her. And she went to Freeport. She was a very awesome teacher, and Baldwin, once again, lost him. You're talking about retention, but you're not following courageous conversations or even just job postings. You know, we can talk all we want, but there's a lot of actions that speak louder than words. And if you want to really have courageous conversations, you should be hiring more what the community reflects, hiring people of diverse backgrounds, not just, well, in this instance, two white women to take over these assistant principals. Why aren't we hiring more? And I will wrap it up, because I hear the bell. I just want clarification in reference to Dr. Gallagher, you had said that, and maybe I read it wrong, on the various positions, you have superintendent, you have the principal of the schools, that have a say by the interview process. And more importantly, at the very end, it's the superintendent that has an interview, correct? And people sit in with that interview process, of which I think you were one of them, correct? Isn't the superintendent, Dr. Cami, your boss? And won't you just go along, and it won't be a jaded interview process if she wants somebody, and you won't give your true feedback?
I'm going to let you answer the question honestly, which is Gallagher.
And that's what I got since my time is up.
Yep. I would disagree that it's not a jaded process. When we do have the interview process at the end, it's typically the three of us that are interviewing the candidates, and there have been instances where Dr. Cami had a candidate that she referred, and for various reasons, we were not in agreement, and a candidate maybe was not hired. So it is a team approach, and we look at a lot of different factors in making a decision.
And is it with the principal? Is that the right level on that one line, the third slide that you had roughly? I don't remember, it said how the interview process was. I tried taking a picture, but my phone was blurry.
The vetting process.
I would have been, the vetting process, is that what it is?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just that I tried taking a picture. I wanted it to be clearer, but my phone was blurry, so I couldn't.
Okay, the presentation most likely will be on the website.
Yeah.
All right.
And you'll, okay, so any further question, you can always raise it again.
And of course, again, while we cannot ever speak about any individuals, you know, I would just like to reemphasize that a lot of work goes into adhering to the very involved process that was laid out for you here tonight. And things are never up to one person or two people. It is very much a team effort, and the decisions are made by many people. Again, a team effort. So I will leave, leave it at that. And...
No response in regards to the bullying or the instruction from technology? Were they online?
Well, we can certainly...
If it's a question, I'm happy to answer the question.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm happy to answer the question for the community. The question about remote instruction is that what we have identified, not only in Baldwin, but around the country, is that remote instruction is not the most effective way of instructing our students. And so in-person instruction is quite a bit more effective than instructing remotely. So we have not abandoned it, and we have not abandoned the technology, nor have we abandoned the infrastructure. We use the infrastructure every day. The one-to-one computing is used by our students every day. It is not, however, used with students at home, working remotely. So the answer to your first question around infrastructure and the investment in infrastructure, the investment holds, and it's being used wisely and in the best interests of students. As far as bullying is concerned in DASSA, I'm pretty sure that there is a clear definition of DASSA, and bullying has a very particular definition, right? When we all went to school, there were always kids that did not necessarily act properly. That's not bullying. Bullying has an actual definition, and that's an ongoing, continued harassment of students. We talk to our kids all the time. The kids know where to go if there is an issue of bullying. What I don't want is, I don't want this community to walk away thinking that there is a bullying problem in Baldwin, because there is not a bullying problem in Baldwin. Are there instances where kids don't behave properly? There are instances everywhere where kids don't behave properly, and when that happens, we address it directly. When it is brought to our attention, we address it directly. And so if there are any cases where kids are not behaving properly, the first thing that we want is, we want either the student or the parent, if the student is uncomfortable, to make the administrator in that building aware of the problem. But what I don't want is, I don't want people to walk away thinking that bullying doesn't have a specific definition, and that Baldwin has a bullying problem, because it does not.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Cami. And we just have one more person, Tricia Wilder.
So I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I want to give kudos to the Universal 3K Program. I have been a kindergarten teacher in this district for 25 years, and have participated in the kindergarten screening for all 25 years. And this week is kindergarten screening, and I have seen such amazing children come in and are so prepared to come to kindergarten, and I just can't thank you enough. If you could please relay that message to the teachers in that program, the administrators in that program, and thank you, Mr. McNella, for overseeing the curriculum. I am so excited for next year. So thank you very much for making that all happen, and I think my job's going to be a little easier. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for that comment, and thank you for being such a wonderful addition to our school district. The Board of Education approves the Personnel Actions Report as amended and dated March 9th, 2022, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Smith?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mrs. Reed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. The Board of Education approves the recommendation for services of the Committee on Special Education, Sub-CE, 504 Committee, and Committee on Preschool Special Education for services in November and December 2021, and January and February 2022, as detailed in the Friday mailing. So moved. Moved by Mrs. Reed?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved. The Board of Education approves the Home Tutoring and Special Education Service Reports as detailed in the Friday mailing. So moved. Moved by Mrs. Reed?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Bless you. As Board President, I'm calling for consideration of a consent agenda for business items 1 through 10. Are there any items that members would care to withdraw from consideration under the consent agenda for further discussion and a separate vote? I would actually like to pull out item number two, just because I have a question. Okay, so we'll approve, we'll approve it, and then I'll ask my question. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, including business items 1 through 10? So moved. Moved by Mr. Smith?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mrs. Reed. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve business items 1 through 10?
Mrs. Schools, would you like to ask the question about two before we approve the agenda?
I mean, well, it's, we'll approve it anyway. It's, yeah, all right, so I'll just go ahead quickly and ask my question. I would just like to know, so this is, item number two has to do with sale of an obsolete item. It was a district vehicle. And I just wonder, has the district ever dealt with Auctions International?
Recycle? Hash recycle?
That's, yeah, that's the name of the company. And it's, you can sign up, you write online and get an account. I've been made aware of this by some other municipalities, and, yeah, it's Auctions International. And anytime you're selling, it doesn't even have to be vehicles, but any type of equipment, apparently, people do very, very well with this company, and, you know, because they see that we sold it for scrap. So I just wondered if you were aware of them, and it might be something you would want to look into, just to be able to sell things for more money for the district.
Yeah, so we can look into it. We're kind of guided by very strict rules about who we can do business with. I don't know if you've ever heard of them, or...
I've heard of that, but I didn't certainly look into it, but the president said that that's right.
Okay, all right, great. Okay, so now, do I have a motion to approve business items 1 through 10? So moved. Moved by Mrs. Reed?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mrs. Dureska. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. The Board of Education acknowledges that there is no update to the Use of Facilities Report for this month. Resolution for Annual School Election and Budget Vote Ballot. The Board of Education adopts the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby adopts the Annual School Election and Budget Vote Ballot Notice of Annual Election and Budget Vote for the Baldwin Union Free School District to take place on May 17th, 2022, and further resolve that the district clerk is hereby authorized to take all necessary steps to publicize the notice as detailed in the Friday mailing. So moved. Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mrs. Reed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Everybody? Everybody in favor? Okay.
Everybody's in favor.
Aye. So moved. Okay. Also, just a side note for anybody who doesn't already know, the election is being moved back to the high school this year. The Board of Education authorizes administration to prepare and file the 2022-2023 Property Tax Report Card, the Administrative Salary Disclosure, the Six-Day Budget Notice, and any other 2022-2023 budget-related documents as required by law. So moved. Moved by Mr. Smith?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mrs. Reed. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 So moved. The Board of Education approves the Memorandum of Agreement with the Nassau County Board of Elections to Rent the DS 200 Scanning Machines and Auto Mark for the May 17th, 2022 Budget Vote and Board Election, as detailed in the Friday mailing. So moved. Moved by Mrs. Reed? Seconded by Mr. Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. The Board of Education approves the following resolution. Be it resolved that upon reviewing the decision of the Superintendent of Schools made on February 2nd, 2022, and the appeal letter dated February 9th, 2022, the decision made by the Superintendent of Schools in the matter of NS is sustained. So moved. Moved by Mrs. Reed?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mrs. Dureska. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. The Board of Education, as a component district of the Board of Cooperative Education Services of Nassau County, BOCES, nominates...
Robert Schoen.
B.A. Schoen.
I'm sorry.
Well, there was nothing...
No. I don't think we can table it. I agree.
Okay. I...
There were three, right? There was Fran, Robert, and who was the third candidate?
We never got a packet for Mr. Elaby, who I think is, I think his seat is up.
Mary Jo, we can't hear you. Can you turn my phone?
I don't recall in the packet that we got a letter from the third person whose seat is up, nor did I see anything from a challenger. I could be mistaken, but in other words, the three people whose seats are up...
Right. Were running uncontested?
Are, I, I...
There were two letters.
That's right. And there are three seats, so I'm, you know...
There were only two received, only for B.A. Schoen and the other individual didn't send anything, and...
But the seat is up.
Correct, there are three seats.
And is that...
That's what, that's why I didn't get that information, Mrs. O'Hagan. So that's why I'm saying we need to talk about it. I don't even understand.
Are we allowed to just nominate the two people who submitted the letters?
Yes, we can do that.
I asked if we are allowed to, we only had two letters come in, and those we know for certain are running. We don't know about the third candidate. So I asked if we are allowed to just nominate the two individuals that submitted letters, only because, I mean, we could nominate Ron, but we don't know if he's really running. So...
And we have a limited window. I think, you know, that we have to make the, we don't have to make the nomination at all, but we, if we're going to, it probably has to be at this meeting.
Yeah, they, it has to be by March 21st, I believe.
Right, we have to do it today. I'm fine with that. I just wanted to talk about it. Are you confirming that there are three seats available? We only got two? That's what, or is that what, that's what we think? Do we know?
Mrs. Prath, do you know?
Sorry, there are three seats, but we only received two letters requesting our, asking if we can nominate.
Okay.
That's what I thought.
So what Mrs. Reed said, and let's do it that way.
Okay. Just nominate the two... Okay. That we got. Okay. Which, okay, everyone's all right with that?
So that's Robert Schoen and Fran Langstaff. Those are the two whose letters we... Langstaff?
Yeah.
Yeah. Fran. F-R-A-N. Yeah. Fran. Fran, yeah, I'm sorry, this is so garbled.
Okay, so we'll just go back to reading this as...
Yeah.
F-R-A-N. I'm sorry, Fran. F-R-A-N. Okay, we good? Okay. So we'll start this over. The Board of Education has...
I'm sorry, Fran, F-R-A-N. Okay, very good. Okay. So we'll start this over. The Board of Education, as a component district of the Board of Cooperative Education Services of Nassau County, nominates BA Schoen and Fran Langstaff as members of the BOCES Board, as detailed in the Friday mailing. So moved. Moved by Mrs. Reed? Seconded by Mr. Smith? All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, so we are now at other. Does anybody have any other? No? I would just like to give everybody some dates to mark on your calendar. This Saturday, March 12, Sports Night at the high school, 7:30. Monday, March 14, Spring Sports Tryouts at the high school. Monday, March 21, Sweets and Sweats at the high school, 7:00 p.m., in person. So nice to have our events all back in person. Tuesday, March 22, College Bound Junior Night at the high school, 7:00 p.m. That one, though, is virtual. Monday, March 28, Spring Sports Tryouts at the Baldwin Middle School. Tuesday, March 29, Parent Academy Workshop at the high school, 7:00 p.m. Thursday, March 31, at 4:00 p.m., through April 1 and April 2, Drama Production at the high school, 7:30 p.m. And Tuesday, April 5, Budget Roadshow Presentation, 7:00 p.m. During the following PTA meetings at Brookside. And, oh, there's two others that night also. Yeah, they're not on here. Okay, so on the 5th, I'm sorry, it's not on here, and I want to make sure you guys have the right information. So April 5, there's three that night, Brookside, Meadow, and Steel. And at all of those PTA meetings, the budget presentation will be done. And Wednesday, April 6, Board of Education meeting, 8:00 p.m.
At Meadow, is that Meadow?
At Meadow, yes. Okay. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting? So moved. Moved by Mrs. Reed? Seconded by Mrs. Dereska. All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. And thank you, everybody, so much for coming. Get home safe.